All right, so I follow the city council workshop meeting. I like to follow everybody online. Hi there. So, I'll call this meeting the word and did that. Sorry, I'm not here. Absolutely. Very good.
I have a question to reply, uh, the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not everyone, any business will with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have an excuse absence for a little bit, and it's going to be Richard Rockwell, he is at the. I still have a four man, but then he said that he'll be here later tonight, so these excuses. Who's on? All right, Mr. Hammond.
Okay, uh, in your packets, you can go to page eleven, that is where it will start. And you put your finger on page eleven and go directly to page sixteen. So, uh, the example that we have, so the current city is right there talking about the general elections. On, you know, sixteen is the LOC model. And that is quite a bit more in depth. So there is the elections, correct, and then all those on autumn, uh, sixteen, that is.
And I made a note that the stuff that is highlighted, there are bullets that are highlighted, those are involved somewhere else in the charter, in the LOC model that have everything together.
Which we will, do you actually go with it, so? So again, very general statement on ours, that is, and theirs is part of it in depth. And I know it.
We're on six point four, about, and it's all we got.
Yeah, the except is this charter otherwise. Provides other ones, yes, and then we can compare it to the other one on page sixteen.
Hello, we're on, we're thinking about following the election part.
And again, that's the session up to you all. It is. And one thing that you're gonna see about the LOC model, when we can get to that point, the flow of it is just very concise, there's, there's rhythm to it, there's purpose. Um, a little more than ours, so it's very much more.
But weren't a lot of these, uh, sections in the.
There were some others.
That were in the.
In ours, they just can, right, again, organize it to one location, so if you want to know about the elections, it's all there compared to ours where it's like a weird.
That's sort of the new life, it puts it all together, if you want to know how to do that, you have to do.
But again, their, uh, their wording is just, it's more explained, like. Uh, detail compared to ours, where it's.
And you're saying that the event of the time vote, that the LOC has been provided by which to cover the conference?
On twenty five?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay.
So, so on twenty four.
Well, okay, so.
On page sixteen, correct, the very first thing, there's quasi-futile judicial authorities, that's about nothing to do with what we're talking? No, we're talking about like the little questions.
There's our section three point seven. Then in the section three, something we're talking about.
But in the packet that I gave you today, the, I actually included the LOC model, so we can look in there to see what three point seven.
And there's, in the last one, kind of, there's one point four, we have four, four, and then the next one is three. I, I just.
Well, so I think that, like in Baker right now, they had. Four people leave, or three people leave in August, and then everybody quit the council in September. And so then there was this idea that the voters would get a chance to reelect the council. And the state law said that no, the county commission has the authority to appoint. And the county commission was of the opinion that they would not appoint anyone who had John Schiff in September to try to force a vote to the public. And then there was this, on top of all of that, the county's only way to appoint enough to make a majority in that majority could appoint remaining nerves.
Yeah.
And there were probably three councils in the fall of last year in the state of Oregon, in eastern Oregon, who completely. Abandoned every position, and the county commission had to end it in those cases, but this says something different. Doesn't it? It says Philly Magazine, brought up, you know, you know, China, as a donation.
Well, he commented, and this says something different, this one says, um. The appoint, appointees' term of office runs from appointment until expiration of the term of office of the last person elected to that office, which is what we currently do. And he was saying that that appointed version, person should only be in that position until the next election.
Correct.
He was trying to change of how long your election could last. Like, well, no, longer, I don't know, I think we lost.
Before you go to it.
Correct.
Right.
But the problem with that is that your voting length of time to begin is a certain window of time, so if you're going to get voted in midway through your, the term you were appointed to. Then that would go five people out for election in a year, or six people out for election in a year, as opposed to four.
So his thought was that you. Uh, went out, got elected, right, and so for instance, I came in, here mine doesn't expire until twenty two, so I would get a election this year.
Right.
And then I would have to run for again, twenty six, with this position. So kept it on track, but what, I don't want that happen, with that thing, is all of a sudden, three new people came in, right? And happens to be the same year that these guys do, now you have a new board.
I see.
Yeah, well, and the other, the other thing to consider too, is those that come in, like, I was appointed in September, and. The election, you already passed the point where you can turn in your paperwork to be even on the ballot.
Right, so you would do the next one.
Right.
That was just about.
Okay, but this says, as little as a single council member may constitute majority for purposes of filling vacant council seat, if all of their council seats are vacant. And the appointees' term of office runs from appointment until expiration of the term, blah, 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 but that line. A single council member could start making appointments.
And then up above, it does say.
Which I would definitely not be in favor of.
Yeah, but up above, it does say, uh, they, um, something about you need to follow the state law, right, there in the election, seven point three.
Right.
Uh, must conform to state law, so if the state law allows, like, when you're zero paper with zero.
Right.
So they would have to begin with the state law, which is, but it was.
So, but we had one, right, we said in the rule, I think it was the rule, we said in there, you had to have the majority plus one.
We did say.
Or half plus one, so you have the majority that way, so you have to.
Right. Or if that one group, or if it appoints two people, then you've got three, then that's majority plus one, and then that whole council would have to run the rest.
And.
Right, but one was a single council member, so that, that's not two. It says a single.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we don't wanna.
And we can, and I can look, I can look on the details, but what we're agreeing on is that is more detailed than what we have.
Yes, well, that's, yeah, so.
So if one's down here, so even though if that happens, then we can look on the details, right?
Yes, so we're gonna write more on them.
Yep.
But I'm just gonna underline, again, all of this will go through then this.
So we're gonna allow somebody else to make the, the appointments of the city council.
Well, we'll, I will look up to see again, what is, can you, are we gonna say it's gonna be like, so this is one, or are we saying we have to have. One plus one?
Well, if ever, if six of people, all of a sudden step out and say, I'm done, and there's one person left, well, they can't have a meeting, so.
So, yeah, so I'll work on those details to see how that looks.
I sure don't think that I want somebody in the county who's in charge of the board. But that's like, so if the recall goes through right now, right, and all three of them happen to get recalled, state of Oregon. State of Oregon, now, you don't. But if one state, don't pick the state of Oregon, the V O C, the board will choose their one. They have to choose. Right, state, the state appointed, uh, sorry, because they already won, so they gave them one, and then one was one.
Yeah.
They gave two, and they.
Correct.
So, but if it wasn't, and they might still afford the state of Oregon with that issue. But they just made it easy, and there was those people that already won, right? So.
Well, and I agree, it's up to the, I don't know that I want the county maybe appointment, but even less, I don't want one council member making one.
So.
Even less, I don't, even less, I'm really happy.
So let's not get caught up in that.
All right. The weeds.
Okay, all right, so on to twenty five, um, I contacted LOC, and that is the best one, that is it, drowning rocks. Uh, there were a couple examples, but this seems to be the, the general.
Solomon, let's again.
Okay? We'll meet in that. Okay, on this place.
They essentially say the same thing.
Two or one bit on top. The LOC's kind of, there is, it was.
And it's the first council meeting of the year, so that's a little more concise.
So LOC. Twenty seven.
Guys, that were cars, because of.
It's just before entering.
Just kind of, I don't know.
Yes, it gives you a, a deadline. Just wearing versus just whenever.
I don't know if you wanted to add the piece of the mayor, who's the mayor, if you wanna.
My idea is that where you're going with that, the mayor and each counselor shall take the vote. And I like the specific. Do you like the specific names other than the mayor and officer?
We just add, uh.
Or mayor and counselors, and add, add that, maybe.
So just the mayor and, and the, just right there, we're gonna call it as the mayor and each officer.
For each, for each counselor. Say the mayor and each counselor, and read out each officer.
Okay.
Okay, so the mayor and each counselor, uh, before entering upon duties of office, shall take, is that correct? And the man who's in office, so that way, okay, twenty eight.
I like this, the head of LOC, the council. Does anybody question my question?
Thanks, sir.
It says who's responsible. If, if it was just nominations for elective office. And it doesn't, we have to.
Just, I only have coordinates. We'll say it at the same time. Yeah, that would be my question as well. I know the city follows county election, you have to say that, yeah. I don't know that there's a specific ordinance. Or, yeah, general ordinances, yeah, there's, yes, but. Okay, see, Jackie's in the room, right? She is, she's on the.
Oh, I know, she's.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we can.
So we're saying the LOC.
Um, why? Because it's actually starting us to adopt the ordinance. And follow that one, and it's, we already have something, that being, say, we already followed the general one. I don't know, just.
So what's that, do you, uh, city one? Do you write okay by a, I don't care, just.
Okay, so all right, put an okay with A Y on that one.
By the city, correct? Okay, cool.
Sure.
Okay, next one?
Now, the only thing, I did highlight, absence from the city for thirty days without consent, so if you were to go on the case or something like that, that's kind of, like, we didn't. No, I was saying, like, that's kind of, I didn't, I didn't care for the thirty days without council consent.
Seems kind of controlling, doesn't it?
Yeah, the, the safety day, I changed to ninety because of, we had farther back, one of these actually, it was ninety days or. Something, or it's already ninety days. Three consecutive, regular meetings is what we have currently, and they were kind of sixty, so. I figured ninety would keep it current with that, but. Do we really want to, uh. Put in there that says, if you're absent for three meetings, you're done.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, do we want to be, I.
I think those are unexcused absences, though.
Right, yeah, that's like if I just been thrown a fit, and don't want to come, and hold people down, have a war. And that, so number two is absence from the city for thirty, thirty days without council consent.
Yeah, I don't like that, I don't like that a lot.
I don't either.
But the sixty day period over here, I just made that ninety to keep it ins, keep it concise with our. I would probably write to put something in there for unexcused. Well, it says, well, it's an unexcused, uh, here for this is for, so, I mean, yeah, we throw an excuse in there just to clarify.
Hey, since we only meet once, once a month, right? So if we had nine day period for unexcused from council meetings, that would be three consecutive meetings.
Unexcused, okay, so just to clarify, am I taking off absence from the city for thirty days without council consent and taking that part off?
Yes.
And we're leaving, would we mean?
You'd be absent from all council meetings within a ninety day period.
And they go to Europe, or third, or two months, and the council says, no, you're not, we're gonna kick you out.
Oh, I see. So, um, um, so absent. From all council meetings within a ninety day period.
Unexcused, unexcused.
So here's the condition of a misdemeanor felony, that's, I know that was.
I think that was on the other LOC model too, on page sixteen of the district groups.
The misdemeanor felony.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, and, and again, this would, I know there is another, one or five seconds of, this would be the.
And what is eight point one?
Uh, eight point one is just saying, uh, okay, you're done at the end of your term. And we agree with our goal, I mean, just like the general, the general, is this. Is there anything else that you want to add up there?
Now, is this, just clarifying here, but the convention, the condition of misdemeanor felony, is that it passed or during, or?
I think it's connection during, because you should have, they're getting elected, that should have been brought out. Correct.
Is it the fiction, misdemeanor fiction, keeping you from running?
Well, that's the point, I don't know, but what our new rule is, oh, that anymore, you won't be able to get away with it not being brought out. But. And I, if don't you sign, I, I don't care what those papers look like, when you do want to run, but don't you sign up thing that says that not a dollar?
No.
It doesn't have anything about that.
See, this is always, they're right.
The things I require you to work on apart, and earn seven dollars and fifty cents an hour. Was more stringent.
I don't, I don't know, this.
What do you power about dogs?
You probably have the authority to do with them. I don't think you can ask them the same questions today, in this lawyer.
You can still ask. You can spill your background, it's a.
Right, but you, on your application, they can't ask if you're a felon. Maybe somehow.
I, I would hope, I'm really happy, just, knowing you're dealing with a little kids, that I ever did, particularly, I know, uh. All in terms of Little League. You have to answer, have you ever made, picked the. So there are dogs out there, there's some, you know, out there that probably don't care what's good.
There's that.
So I, I do know, uh.
So this is, this is for a conviction, um, but not charged. I don't really sound charged for a felony from this.
I'll keep an eye, okay, I have thirty.
Are you gonna put like a vision of the board or up there?
I put, like, with, uh.
Before election or during your term? I think it's. Should be everything.
That's, I mean, that's in there, like, just our, like, what it asks, what you have to do to qualify.
Well, it is, that's what we're watching.
Uh, the one in the back, it passed out. At qualification, there's four, like, four things. And the council is the final judge of the election qualifications of its members.
Yeah, they mentioned nothing about misdemeanor. I mean, you're charged for the fire penalty after I'm elected, I'm gonna lose my spot. You're lucky, correct, so we have a dog, it's not, oh, you're known, known balance, that's what we're asking, oh, they're, they're, they're just interpreter guilty. No, no, they're just, they're just.
Yeah.
No, they're just, well, that would be, well, that would be, uh, actually the, the people. I don't know, I haven't.
Really? No.
But then, well, at least so you don't remember Adam Gold, Adam Gold's a perfect example. He was a convicted felon. And he's done everything bad, he became a law assistant, he became much better, and, you know, uh, so. I think if, 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 I mean, if, if it's not a violation of your requirements, then it's, if people decide if they want that person up there or not.
And I think what Karen was saying is, is true, now it's still hard to hide that. You know, when people are running, it's certainly gonna be out there.
I know on that, and again, that would be a different section, the, uh.
I just think it would really suck if I was, did something really stupid, and I, I lost my gun rights, and I lost it all of a sudden, and I finally did it back, oh.
And, and again, it would, I mean, this will have to go through lawyers and.
Too bad.
All right, thirty.
Now, did your vote, was it on page sixteen?
Yeah.
Kind of like the short sweetness of it, pretty, well, yeah, we just did this one here for election, it was, I mean, eight.
Uh, and I think that is the same thing, with same word, is it not?
It's pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
The only thing it adds about the temper and the going.
Correct, and that's what we're running with the law, correct, those are not.
Yes, it still has that, it will, there's a single council member, it has two majority.
Correct, is the same one. So. So all of us make this, eight point one.
Oh, the city of Portland versus the people of Portland. I like the LOC law. Uh, the wording better.
Eight, thirty two. Okay. Oh. Okay, now this really changes how we've done that. If you go to the LOC. Well, okay, before I started off, I was gonna say. We normally do not read the entire. Ordinance, I mean, we try to read just the title, and it says here clearly in ours, that, uh, the first reading will be full and. This potentially in one open council, so you're supposed to read the whole day, so it's open in this one, uh, LOC, it says something different. But then when I get down to the part that says. The council may adopt, um, B, I don't, under there, the. And ordinance at a single meeting by the unanimous approval of at least a quorum of the council. And C R says that you have to have every counselor there, it's not the quorum of, I mean, because we've released. Been specific about, I gotta have every single person there, so I think we have to read these words. And, and make sure it's what we think we want.
Just a big topic on the areas that weren't this due, with this section right here about, should, should ordinance be read in the polls, should it be tied to only? And there, there are a lot of cities that were going back and forth, that, well, we've done this, we've done that, or haven't done this, and one, one council member said, I want to read the entire thing. And, uh, some people were saying, well, that's not part of our. Bylaws.
Well, it is, yeah.
So, it's kind of a lot of talk.
Well, and not only that. If you're, to me, if your package is put out ahead of time, I don't think I have to sit there and read five pages. Having same type everywhere.
It's down online.
Yeah, and so I.
The old package is online.
Yeah.
But is it always out one week or the next? Is it specifically written here, provided those ordinance is available and ready for at least one week?
Right, it doesn't actually have to be read.
It is one week, or, is there an easier way to make the readability of the mode of enactment, um, easier to read? I don't know, it just seems like it's really boring, maybe it needs to be.
Well, I know from the planning department side, they usually read all theirs, I mean, and, and they'd be linking.
Right.
Yeah. But. And, yeah, and on the very bottom, it's.
Yeah, and on the very bottom is the effective dated ordinances, all of that information on ours is at the bottom. The current city is all worn. So if you go with the LLC one, then you go back. Then effectively, send that, which is. Thirty days, whether you're in emergency.
I like the specificity of how an ordinance is supposed to happen, I like the specificity of it, so that people can.
Or.
Well, I, I just like specific, it could be specific, this one not specific enough, we just like to make it specific, so we know the steps of what has to happen. So when we're doing an ordinance, passing ordinance, we know, well, it has to be read by title or whatever it has to be. And then there's a set process, I like that, if that does this in the blue, I'm just saying. I'm just trying to work here, just to be able to, and it's like seven font.
What's that?
Do you want it on one page?
I know, I, I know, I was just, uh, but.
Print it on bigger paper.
I know that when it comes to we print it, or it's not going to be that small, but. So it must be a nine, it's not.
Personally, I chose the top one, the one. Uh, because it was a lot more.
Indent.
Indent than last time.
And I agree with that, but I also agree with Karen about not wanting to read the entire ordinance.
Well, I don't know, I'll change that.
It's not the ordinance, because it says provided no member of the council or, uh, the ordinance is read in full.
So that there's a link where we need to see what the LLC model. If they're.
And then we need to see that I cannot get a body, it's just that we don't have to have all seven members present. Everything else seems the same. Cause you don't have to read it in full, and you don't have to read it in full as long as you're here in these rules, and as long as you're here in these rules.
What's our flavor as far as, uh, the requirement of all council members, do we just care about if we have a majority, a quorum?
Yeah, cause that's only in, if we adopted an emergency, I think.
Oh, that would be, uh, an emergency, so.
Otherwise, it's too.
Be there.
Yes.
I mean, yes, uh.
And I think we're gonna have to stop. Okay, there should be some consideration on tagging our ordinances that everyone wants to notice. If there, if we're doing them in two different. Council meetings. That's not an emergency, and that's, you know, you can put a date, it becomes, because we always use this thing about. It becomes a fact that this is an emergency, so it becomes a fact that you had ten days.
So that's why I remember it was almost one of the, that was one of the key factors.
And I think we write our deadline with the state for that one.
That was what I remember, did that.
And I don't remember why, but one time you met at the board, and I said, we all about to be there.
Like when we were doing interviews?
Well, it's happened, it's happened to you.
I don't, and I've blown down our bit for experiences.
I, I like, we went on a weekend for meetings.
Yes.
I don't know what, what specifically from the current one. You would want to, like, no, I, I want it because I want this specific, like, I'm not hearing that part, cause I, I like the concise version.
And the LLC model does not say an emergency. You're gonna do it in a single one, it's just because you have put it out in public, it's in writing, and you have a form.
So let me clarify for you. Our options right now by charter are to do it in one meeting or two meetings. If we do it in one, it's gotta be out seven days advance to the public, the council, and we have to have a full council available.
Correct.
As now you're doing an emergency, you're not. If, and that has to be read, uh, by title only. If we do it in two meetings, we don't have to have a full council, we just have to have a quorum, and we can read it. In full at the first meeting and by time one week of the second meeting. Again, it has nothing to do with emergency, the emergency is, by charter, all of our ordinances are effective thirty days after we pass it. If we don't want to wait the thirty days for some reason, we have a reason, like this homeless thing. We have a deadline by which we have to pass it, we can declare an emergency, we can declare an emergency in either of those types of meetings, one meeting or two meetings.
The emergency becomes effective after we vote on the person.
It's part of the actual, uh, ordinance itself, it says this is an emergency, this apply, so.
And also on the LLC version, it says nothing about title only. It doesn't say read it in full, it doesn't say, it doesn't say anything.
Right.
Now, improve it by the usual, in two meetings, or do it in one, you have a week of, same thing that we do now, except for ours is a, ours is everyone. LLC is a form, that's definitely whatever you guys want to do, but nothing about title, right? So that's.
Ours is not every, what did you say about everyone?
If we wanted to do it in one meeting, everyone has to be there.
According to the current one, we have.
Yes, according to our chart.
But according to the new LLC version, we don't.
Yeah, it is made of a form, correct.
Um, and then a substant, a substantive amendment would require reading it aloud, or make it available in writing to about like seven days.
Definitely would be for the substantive.
So I like it, or are we, current, or, yeah, or do you want?
I guess the only thing is that you can take that little city in I and V under LLC and. Readjust something up here. With our number two.
That's your problem.
So an ordinance may be enacted in a single meeting by the council by a majority vote of all council members upon first being read by title only. And the council may adopt ordinance of a single meeting by a unanimous group of at least a quorum of the council. But if those ordinance is available in writing to public, it's still. So can we just? Trade that, I mean, there would be some detail to make sure that. Cause number one has the exception in blocks number two and three in our ordinance, or in our rule. And they have it as A, except that as B. And theirs, and then they identified. So just.
Um. Yeah, whatever you guys want to do. So when you talk about it, you don't want to read it, the line, the whole thing, LLC, uh, that allows them. It's a shorter read, but if you want more. Like, uh. Drawn out, I, I mean, again, it is what, what we want.
So this one's more descriptive, so where it says read it in full, just changes that to by title only.
Okay, okay, so do we, all right, so consensus just real quick, do you want to go and edit the current one? Yes, yes.
I mean, I would prefer that if we want.
Okay, LLC, yes, 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 current.
Current?
Current.
Well, it's indoors, but.
Yeah, I think we're doing, okay, so.
And the reason I think that the current, our, ours, if you get new council members and stuff, this is much more clearer on what they should expect.
No, that's perfect.
So.
Or either. So with this, we don't have to do the effective dated ordinances because it's in our current one under six. So we just need to edit. What, so what do you have, we got, do you want to?
So if you do the, you can try holding the conference board, because to me, um. When I look at that, you can substantially, you can really look at that, well, substantially is. A perspective.
Correct.
And so, and even we can say, you need to read it in full.
It might change, right? It's still, you're right about title only.
Yeah. So that would be another section we'd have to.
So, okay, just so clarifying.
Oh.
Can we? Can we go through this? And we're going to change everything from read in full to title only, is that what I'm hearing?
Can I just say that item four is talking about if you put something out seven days ago? And you changed that between that LLC seven days ago, then the meeting, versus being adopted? Then you have to read it in full. But if you substantially change what was posted seven days ago, then you don't have to read it in full. That's how I read about.
She's saying one is substantially.
Well, and.
That, that's a case of discovery.
You know, that's what lawyers think, if anyone has a distinction here.
Okay, so I, I think we have a direction that we're taking out reading full. Right?
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, so we're leaving with the top one. Right? And, okay, and the other thing, do you want a quorum or do you want any?
I don't know, we can take four out, cause it also in, um, C under C. But I do need to, they added four, so it reads more like title C.
Oh, right, I wasn't gonna take it out.
Okay. Yeah. This is such a similar.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, do we want?
We can't have, we can't have it, so that every time we want to do it with ordinance. That we have to have everybody here, it has to be some of the time, just regular ordinances that aren't a big deal. It, it shouldn't be the quorum. So if we want to do it within a day, that's the difference, correct?
Right.
So we, we have to have a quorum, so in one meeting, then we want, uh, we all want everyone there, or do you want just a quorum there?
Yeah, I personally like the way that is, we're gonna do it one time, and you're everybody's there.
Okay.
That, that's my.
I would agree too, I mean, I feel like a sickler about it.
Okay. Okay. So we're really, the only thing that we're changing is the fact of, uh, the read by title on the, on the board was.
We can get it down one time and then need to change it again.
That's the only part we have in mind. What about the effective date?
Uh, that was already in six.
Yeah, oh, yes, we're skipping that, cause that kind of is in the bylaws. Right? Thirty-three.
I was gonna say the same. Yeah, that was.
Yeah. How many, condemnation, darn it. I don't know. I will look, so thirty-six.
Okay, thirty-six, we can remove, I talked to LLC, it's like, it's a redundant thing, because it's, it's outdated. So we're gonna remove thirty-six? I was like, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, cause I was.
I didn't leave them around.
I thought, I looked at all of them that didn't have one, and that's why I'm just referencing the thirty-six, so we don't have to have, I will check on thirty-three to see. If, if this is somewhere else. Right? Okay, thirty-four. Speaking of the staff, so.
Is this rules from, what was his name? We have an ordinance. The council may back ordinance, do we have an ordinance?
And in our original, they had discovered by the authority side, I would assume we have. Something that we're concerned. So I would think in more, I mean, these really are, I think it'd get pretty just.
I think it's just worry because they're trying to, um, define owner versus the LLC version.
We walk over.
So, or just assume?
I would have, I wonder if that's in the LLC version already. Okay, but other than that, I mean, yeah, it's up to you guys.
So there would need to be two ordinances if we adopt the LLC version. I understand it.
Or is it the same word?
Sure.
But owners is an ordinance and procedures per governing, the making, altering, making. Or banning of, this.
Is this over page thirteen?
Is this for the condemnation?
Thirteen of the LLC.
Um. I think you better get some of that attorney's advice on this.
Same thing on the condemnation, it's.
Yeah. I would give it.
I don't have, we can just sit here inside of the warranty.
Is that a real law or something?
No.
Some of you are event, uh, that's, uh.
It's not so much.
Oh, yes, I didn't look at that.
Same thing with improvements.
I think that's a crisp frame. Okay, I mean, and again, the LLC model would be embedded, but. Okay, thirty-five.
They're exactly the same.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They're pretty damn close, real close.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, the city one says general ordinance, and the other one just says ordinance.
There's a couple other orders that.
Yeah, the payment of, yeah, yeah. But they're, they're very.
And what did you say about thirty-six? That we can remove it. It's, it's a, oh, it's a. So are we doing LLCs already, are we here? Ours is LLC, the thirty-five?
They're nearly identical, this one says enforcing the payment of, now one just says enforcing special assessments, and this one says should be governed by general ordinance, and this one says will be governed by ordinance, that's the only differences. We can do it too. And I think the payment of is a redundant to the special assessment. So that applies to payment. So, I think LLC.
LLC. LLC. Okay, thirty-seven. LLC, thank you. Okay, thirty-eight.
Identical.
I would say, yeah.
So is that thirty-nine? So, okay, so are we going LLC, LLC, thirty-eight, thirty-nine?
For definitely.
Thirty-nine, LLC. Okay, uh, forty.
Same thing is, again, it just says it in lots of sorts.
Okay, LLC, perfect. Uh, forty-one.
LLC.
Okay, um, the only thing that we have, if, if you will do me a favor, while we can. Uh, we had to go through, I was leaving the last, these last, or whatever, so the quasi judicial authority, and then we have page nine and. Kind of, correct, so that is talking about a municipal judge in nine and city manager on ten.
Page nine or?
Yeah, page nine and ten will be, you know, just if you can look through it, and we will not do a workshop in April.
We don't have any subject.
So, anyway, we, we have, we have plenty of time to go through this and just.
I would rather in April than June.
You'd rather April than June?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather do April than June, then it would, it'd get, be one more, and that would. So we're gonna do the meeting, uh, March twenty-first with community input, come back, and hopefully do kind of that last preview. Um, my hope is, if you, when you have time, so just look at how the formatting is for the LLC. Um, my hope is if you, when you have time, so just look at how the formatting is for the LLC, just. Very organized, I am thinking that we are going to take the information that we have and put it in the LLC version, just to give you an opportunity.
Well, I like the, the gloss or the index where.
Oh, yeah. Every in like headings, everyone's there, it's. Okay, that sounds good, so again, the only ones that will work on, uh, the municipal judge, city manager, and then the quasi. Here you go, and then there's a couple. Questions that I dream. I'm good?
Yeah.
Um. We have a few minutes to go put this up and.
So we're talking when our response.
Are we in there?
No.